Ask Sonia to amend her motion on those three candidates and had, can't remember their names now. No, you. Wilkie and Duville. Duville and Wilkie. Cause you, you motioned Laura Ironclad, right?
Yeah. Laura Ironclad against Steve Wilkie.
Yeah. Yeah, she made the motion, so they should make that amendment for those three.
Okay, that is a councilwoman, do you want to make that, amend your motion?
Um, I don't think I made the motion, I think it was Cora.
Oh, Cora, councilwoman.
Yeah, Cora made that motion, but we were, remember?
Okay.
Yeah, Cora made the motion.
Okay, councilwoman Whitehorse, do you want to amend your motion to include those?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, and second, okay, there's a second. Uh, council, any discussion on that?
Mr. Chair, make sure that's identified that selection one.
Okay. Okay, and then the, the letter is going to be coming from my office, correct? To, okay, that's okay. Okay, um, so secretary, if you could read that motion for the record one more time, then run a vote, thank you.
This motion to have the president, um, the president do a letter to Mr. Lapointe, um, the regional director for the list of qualified Indian preference candidates for their program manager, which is superintendent. And, um, the list just follows. Number one, Laura Ironclad, number two, Steve Wilkie, and number three, Gina DuVall or DuVille.
Alternates, those are alternates, the other two are alternates.
Two and three alternates, okay.
Um, councilman, where?
Mr. Lapointe, is that good enough to where does that wait?
Okay, so I think we're good to go, um, any other questions? Uh, hearing or seeing none, uh, secretary, we can do all.
Wesley Hawkins, senior?
Yes.
Lane Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, senior?
Yes.
Gerald Knoyer, junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins, senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy? Wendell Youngman, junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray? James Cross? Ella John Carlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer, junior?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Puer?
Yes.
Sonia Lohawk Weston?
Ha.
Jackie Sears? Michael Carlo, senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez, junior?
Yes.
Uh, council, that motion passes sixteen, yes, do not voting, thank you, uh, councilwoman, for that motion, uh, next motion, I think it's from Medicine Root District, Councilman Jumping Eagle or Councilman Knoyer, uh, either one of you could, or Councilman Watkins, I'm not sure.
Did, uh?
Or go ahead.
Did they get the resolution there?
It's here, so.
Okay, go ahead, girl. Or Austin?
Wait, oh, oh, um, so what, uh, councilman? Oh, yeah, uh, Mr. Lapointe, so, yeah, I, I, I don't, I think, uh, thank you, Mr. Lapointe, for coming down. Um, I, I don't think we need, uh, I don't think there's additional questions for, for you at this time. So, yeah, but thank you again for coming, I appreciate it, and, uh, yep. So, thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, okay, yeah, yeah, we'll definitely have you, have you back at some point, and we'll send you an invite from the office, so. So, thank you, um, so, uh, councilman Knoyer, junior, do you want to read that motion for Medicine Root District?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Resolution of the Medicine Root District of the Ogalasoo Tribe. Resolution of the Medicine Root District Council requesting Ogalasoo Tribal Council recognition and approval of the Medicine Root District Executive Board of the Medicine Root District Council. The Ogalasoo Tribe has adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December tenth, nineteen thirty-five, twenty-five USCN four seven six. And under Article Four of the Constitution, the Ogalasoo Tribal Council is the governing body of the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation and whereas, under Article Six of the Ogalasoo Tribal Constitution, the Medicine Root District is a recognized district and whereas, Ogalasoo Tribal Council held its district elect- on March ninth, two thousand man for president and vice president, Juanita Sharick for Medicine Root District, which Ogalasoo Tribal Council recognized at the regular march meeting. And whereas, at the Ogalasoo Tribal Council, the Medicine Root District Council representative requested that the Medicine Root District would hold letters of intent and choose off the floor the remaining positions for the Medicine Root District Board, which was authorized by the Ogalasoo Tribal Council. And whereas, the Medicine Root District posted signs three days in advance, notice to the public of this meeting to fill the remain, remaining positions. And whereas, the Medicine Root District held their meeting on April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one at six PM with an established quorum of twenty-six members, president. And whereas, two letters of intent were submitted. Cordelia White Elk for the secretary and Jason Stover for the treasurer. Whereas, the Medicine Root District voted for Cordelia White Elk for the secretary of seventeen four zero against, motion carried. And whereas, the Medicine Root District voted twenty-three for Jason Stover, zero against, motion carried. And whereas, Stephanie Apple was selected off of the floor, motion sixteen four zero against, motion carried. Therefore, be it resolved that the Medicine Root District, based on its selections, recommends that the Ogalasoo Tribal Council hereby certify the official results of the two thousand twenty-one Medicine Root District Executive Board as follows. District President Taylor Little White Man. District Vice President Juanita Sharick. District Secretary Cordelia White Elk. District Treasurer Jason Stover. And District Sergeant at Arms Stephanie Apple. And be it further resolved that the official minutes are hereby attached. Certification, motion.
So, motion made, seconded by Councilman Watkins, uh, councilman, where?
Check, pending a background check.
Um, councilman Knoyer, uh, do you mind putting that in your motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, um, so the motion made, seconded again by Councilman Watkins. Um, it's been amended to include a background check, any, anything else, Councilman Carlo? Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, okay, so, okay, so, um.
I have a question.
Go ahead, councilwoman.
I thought the council, we council took action that everything had to go through the election office. Wasn't that the council action? That was why other districts couldn't select from the floor, correct? Or am I wrong?
Um, council, does anybody have a answer for that?
I think it was left up, left up to the districts to decide how they wanted to proceed with filling those vacant slots.
Okay, thank you, um, councilwoman Whitehorse, is that?
Um, actually, I, I remember that the motion was to send them through the election office so that all the background checks and drug testing could be done through them.
Um, councilman Knoyer, junior?
I do remember that day, uh, Cora, you remember, I, I wanted to add Medicine Root District on, and I got yelled at by the entire council. Um, so I took them off. But then what ended up happening was they went through the district elections, uh, because that's where they started. Elections, I do believe we were informed by the Election Commission that certain positions were not filled because they weren't run for. And after that, we determined that they would just be run off the floor, or however the district wanted to handle them at that point. Under the Constitution.
Comment.
Uh, councilman, Devon Eagle?
Yeah, and, and the, the district chair, Taylor Little White Man, did advise those three that night that they have to pass a background and a drug test. So that, that whole process is there.
Okay, thank you, uh, additional questions, council? Hearing or seeing none online or in person, um, secretary, if you could call the vote, thank you.
Wesley Hawkins, senior?
Yes.
Lane Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
No.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, senior?
Yes.
Knoyer, junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins, senior?
Yes.
Tyler Yellowboy?
No.
Wendell Youngman, junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross? Ella John Carlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer, junior?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Puer?
No.
Sonia Lohawk Weston?
Ha.
Jackie Sears?
Oh, huh.
Michael Carlo, senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez, junior?
No.
Uh, council, that motion passes thirteen, four, four against, and one not voting, thank you, council. Um, I think we have another item, uh, councilman Rodriguez?
This was in reference to, uh, Steve Gunn's request, we've got a copy of it. Says, resolution of the Ogalasoo Tribal Council, the Ogalasoo Tribe authorizing the legal team consisting of the attorneys from the American Civil Liberties Union and the Legal Department of the Ogalasoo Tribe, and the expert consultants from the village earth to continue research claims relating to the jurisdiction of Ogalasoo Tribe, and to report back to the Ogalasoo Tribal Council in thirty days. Whereas, the Ogalasoo Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referring the vote in December fourteenth, ninety-five, in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, and under Article Three of the lawsuit Tribe Constitution, the Ogalasoo Tribe Council's governing body of the Ogalasoo Tribe. And whereas, the tribal constitution, Article, uh, that four, section one, be vest the tribal council with authority to hire legal counsel in, uh, to advise the rights of the tribe and its members. And whereas, by resolution number twenty dash thirty, the tribal council authorizes the formation of legal team, including attorneys from the American Civil Liberties Union and the Ogalasoo Tribe Legal Department to research claims relating to the tribe's jurisdiction, and to report back to the tribal council in thir, in ninety days. And whereas, the legal team reported back to the tr- tribal council as directed, and based on recommendations, uh, on the recommendation of the legal team, the tribal council enacts this resolution to authorize and direct a legal team to continue its work for the additional, for an additional thirty days, and to report back to the tribal council at its regular session in May, twenty twenty-one. Now, therefore be resolved that the Ogalasoo Tribal Council hereby authorizes and directs the legal team established by resolution number twenty dash thirty to continue its work for an additional thirty days, and to report back to the tribal council at the regular session in May, twenty twenty-one. And be it further resolved that the legal team and its attorneys and its expert cons- consultant from village earth shall have the authority to consult and confirm in a privileged and confidential manner, while performing its research in the next thirty days. The legal teams may provide preliminary reports upon request to the Executive Committee of the Ogalasoo Tribe and to Law and Order Committee of the Ogalasoo Tribal Council certification. Motion.
Motion, seconded by Councilman Youngman, uh, any discussion on this, council? Hearing or seeing none online or in person, uh, secretary, if you could call the vote, thank you.
Wesley Hawkins, senior?
Oh.
Lane Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, senior? Gerald Knoyer, junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins, senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yep.
Wendell Youngman, junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross? Ella John Carlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer, junior?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Puer? Sonia Lohawk Weston?
Ha.
Jackie Sears?
Oh, huh.
Michael Carlo, senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez, junior?
Yes.
Uh, council, that motion passed sixteen, yes, do not, thank you, council. Um, I believe that is it that we have for the motions and resolutions, unless I'm forgetting one? Different nation? Oh, uh, for. Okay, um, yo, uh, uh, councilwoman Lohawk Weston, there's a proclamation for, yeah, you want to?
Um, yeah, I've seen that, President, and I guess I'm really, uh, you know, honored that you're, and thank you for, uh, doing this, uh, presidential proclamation on behalf of, uh, Ms. Bernadine Bluebird. And I could, uh, you want me to go and read it?
Yeah.
Okay, it's a presidential proclamation, Ogalasoo Tribe, Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. A proclamation by the President of the Ogalasoo Tribe, Kevin Killer. On this twenty-eighth day of April, twenty twenty-one, we reflect on the life and work of Bernadine Bluebird of the Wakabamne District of the Ogalasoo Tribe. Ms. Bluebird provided twenty-nine years of service to the Ogalasoo Tribe with her last place of employment in the Ogalasoo Tribe Enrollment Department. Ms. Bluebird began employment with the tribe in nineteen seventy-five. She served as the Ogalasoo Tribe Secretary from nineteen seventy-five to nineteen eighty-two. From nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and three, Ms. Bluebird served in the Ogalasoo Tribe Census Department. From two thousand and four to two, twenty twenty-one, Ms. Bernadine Bluebird provided service to the tribe in the enrollment department. Ms. Bluebird was a long ter, long, uh, time member of the Wakabamne District of the Ogalasoo Tribe and a respected elder. Now, therefore, I, Kevin Killer, President of the Ogalasoo Tribe, pursuant to the authority vested in me as tribal president, do hereby recognize Bernadine Bluebird's twenty-nine years of service to the Ogalasoo Tribe and respected elder of the tribe. A witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand this twenty-eighth day of April, twenty twenty-one.
Uh, motion made and hasn't been seconded, uh, any discussion on that?
Just want to, uh, thank you, I guess, uh, uh, Mr. President, and I guess on behalf of the, uh, Bluebird family within our district, I do know that, uh, they were very, um, you know, I guess honored yesterday to have, uh, heard that the Ogalasoo Tribe, uh, passed the resolution on behalf of, uh, their loved ones. And they just wanted to give thanks to the, uh, Ogalasoo Tribe as well as the, um, Executive Board, uh, President of the Ogalasoo Tribe. And I just want to say that, you know, we always remember our, our tribal members in our district. And I think that, you know, we need to really take time as tribal leaders to remember the employees within our tribe that have worked here for many years. And I think we need to start looking at, uh, honoring them while they're still alive. And I think not, um, it's always hard when, uh, we honor them when they pass away. So I think just something that, uh, our tribal leaders should think about, um, and to maybe from here for, on forward, that we should start, you know, doing that, honoring our tribal employees. Thank you.
Thank you, councilwoman, for sure, and, uh, you know, that might, that brings up a good idea of maybe honoring our employees who've worked with us for twenty years, you know, having a, a dinner or something like that for them in fifteen years, you know, things like that. So that might be, moving forward, we'll, we'll try to figure out what that might look like, so definitely. Um, uh, just real quick, was she a, a veteran too, or no? Does anyone know?
No, I don't remember, but I think we can find out.
Okay, okay, so we just make sure, but, yeah, but from our office, we'll put this in a plaque to make sure that, you know, I'll sign it and put it on nicer paper and stuff like that. Um, it will look pretty nice, so. Um, but with that, um, so.
Comment.
Go ahead, uh, so sorry, councilwoman, go ahead.
Thank you, um, this is Jackie Sears, uh, what, the Wakabamne District rep also. And at this time, you know, I want to send my condolences to our district member and their families who are going through this loss today. And I do know that Bernadine was an asset to the tribe. She put a lot of, um, work into working with the people. And she's such a kind-hearted person, and I just, you know, people remember her that way. And I do want to say that it was an honor to know her and the family. So, you know, on behalf of my family too, that we, um, do honor Ms. Bernadine Bluebird. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, councilwoman.
Mr. President?
Uh, councilwoman.
Uh, I just received a text message from one of the family members, but she said, uh, she wasn't a veteran.
Okay, thank you.
Just wanted to share that, thank you.
Appreciate it. Um, anything else, council, on this before we vote? Uh, it's popcorn right around council, so, um. Oh, go ahead, councilwoman.
You know, I think that right now, today, uh, our tribe has an ordinance, uh, which is a shelter-in-place ordinance. And I think it's kind of hindering, um, this, the family of, uh, with, for wake and funeral services. And I think that, um, I think the wake and funeral services have been kind of, um, uh, up to the family as to how they want to have their wake and funeral. But I, I really would like to maybe put this maybe in your hands, Mr. President, to see if you could work with, um, uh, the family and just making sure things get done for them. I think they're having a hard time, uh, getting a place within the Wakabamne District. I think it was the Wakabamne Lake Community Building, and I think we're getting messages on that. And at a time of, uh, loss and a time of their mourning, they really don't want to run into that problem, but because the shelter-in-place ordinance is there telling them they could use the, the building. But if there's something because of the people getting vaccinated, and we're on the yellow, was it yellow level? I really would like to see something worked out here where maybe something could be given to whoever may have this concern about this shelter-in-place ordinance, so that, uh, it doesn't hinder the family from, uh, making the wake and funeral arrangements for Ms. Bernadine Bluebird. So I just wanted to share that with you, President, if you could maybe follow up with that with the, with, uh, the family. I think it's Ms. Debbie Bluebird.
Yeah, we could, we could do that, and I'll, I'll get the number for me after the meeting.
Yeah.
Um, and I believe shelter-in-place when they're in yellow, uh, gathering of fifty people are allowed. So that, that, I don't, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anything else, council, before we vote? Um, secretary, if you could call the vote, thank you.
Wesley Hawkins, senior?
Yes.
Lane Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, senior?
Yes.
Harold Knoyer, junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins, senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
John Carlo?
Yes.
George, George Dreamer, junior?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Puer?
Yes.
Sonia Lohawk Weston?
Ha.
Jackie Sears?
Oh, huh.
Michael Carlo, senior?
Yes.
Bernardo, Bernardo Rodriguez, junior?
Yes.
Uh, council, that passes eighteen, four zero against, thank you, council. Um, anything else that we need to vote on, council, other than the reports, I think? Um, hearing or seeing none, councilman, where, did you have a motion that you want to make?
Yes, I, I just want to make a motion that we accept all the written reports from who's on this list. But we need to do the treasurer and the secretary.
Okay, good deal, uh, so we'll, we'll do that motion right now, and then we'll, we'll come back to the secretary and the treasurer. Um, um, any discussion on that, council, uh, councilman, Yellowboy?
Is the chief of staff on?
Yeah, it's, it's passed out.
No, is she on? I don't, uh, I believe Mr. Hi-Hop, Hi-Hop's on from, from the office. Just, just Mr. Hi-Hop's on, I think.
Okay, I guess, um, I guess I'll catch up with her later on and ask, there's some questions on these report, on her report. And I brought it up to, uh, the councilman, my colleagues on, on the other end here in regards to some of the funding. And, um, so I guess those are questions that we'll have to ask her when she's present.
Um, I know that Dakota went to make a comment, uh, go ahead, Dakota.
Um, yeah, she's on, she's in the waiting room, um, and has been for a little while now. Um, but she's also here, so.
Okay, good afternoon, how could I help you?
Uh, councilman?
Shouldn't be spoken on air.
Okay, okay, so you want to, do you want to go into executive on that? All right. Okay, so.
We'll approve these ones, and then.
Okay.
We'll go into executive before we end.
Okay, so, um, so we'll, uh, so do you want to approve the, the chief of staff's report as well?
Not yet.
Okay, so, uh, councilman, where, if you want to make that motion excluding those, the chief of staff, the treasurer, and, uh.
Twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six are approved.
Okay. Okay, um, so we'll, we'll, so we'll approve those, uh, any discussion on that? Hearing or seeing none, uh, secretary, if you could call the vote, thank you.
Wesley Hawkins, senior?
Yes.
Lane Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, senior?
No.
Gerald Knoyer, junior?
No.
Austin Watkins, senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella John Carlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer, junior?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Puer?
Yes.
Sonia Lohawk Weston?
Ha.
Jackie Sears?
Yeah.
Michael Carlo, senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez, junior?
No.
No.
Uh, Council, that motion passes fifteen four three against. Thank you, Council. Um, so I, I, I think we have the next on the item is Secretary's Office. Or the Vice President, oh, Vice President. Are we on a Vice Chair or Secretary? A Vice, Vice President, Vice President's report.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Okay, so a motion to approve second by Council, Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston. Uh, any discussion on that? Uh, hearing or seeing none, um, Secretary, if you can call the vote. Thank you.
Wesley Hopkins Senior.
Good.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Huh, huh.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBray.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Richard Ironclad.
No.
David Puer.
Yeah.
Sonia Lohawk Weston. Jackie Sears.
Oh huh.
Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
No.
Uh, motion passes sixteen yes, two no. Thank you, Council. Um, Councilor Yellowboy.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to motion for approval for minutes March twenty-second, twenty-eighth, thirtieth and thirty-first second.
Motion rates by Councilman Yellowboy, seconded by Councilwoman, uh, Carlo to approve the minutes on Sunday agenda. For March twenty-second, March twenty-eighth, March thirtieth, thirty-first. Okay. Uh, any discussion on that, Council? Uh, hearing or seeing none online or in person? Uh, Secretary, if you could call the vote.
Wesley Hopkins Senior.
Good.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBray.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Richard Ironclad. David Puer.
Yes.
Sonia Lohawk Weston.
Ah.
Jackie Sears.
Oh huh.
Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yeah.
Um, Council, that passes eighteen four zero against. Thank you, Council. Councilman Yellowboy.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to approve, uh, executive committee minutes for March twenty-ninth, March, April eighth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second, uh, second by Councilman DeBray. Um, thank you. So a motion to approve the Secretary's Office minutes, March twenty-four, twenty-nine, twenty-one, one, April eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, any discussion on that? Hearing or seeing none, uh, Secretary, if you could do the vote. Thank you.
Wesley Hopkins Senior.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBray.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
David Puer.
Yes.
Sonia Lohawk Weston. Jackie Sears.
Oh huh.
Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Uh, Council, that passes eighteen four zero against. Thank you, Council. Unanimous. Um, so moving on, I think we got item number eighteen, which is, uh, the, uh. Treasurer, Vicro.
Good afternoon, Council. Are you ready for me?
Yep.
Okay, so I did send out the, uh, the report. Uh, one of the ones I sent out kind of late was the one for the districts. Um, I'm on my way over there, but I'm, I'm gonna be late anyway, so we'll do it now over the, over. The, over the phone, I guess. Um, so I did send out the late one was the district. I know that's one of the ones I think most of you are gonna have. Uh, questions on it. Did, did you guys get that? I hope. It, it shows you that the district.
Uh, yeah, I think, um, all the council received those, uh, treasure.
Okay. Um, so it's gonna show your balances at your district level, what you guys have left, if you're overspent or whatnot. Um. And is there any questions on that, I guess? Cause I, I know there's a few guys that want to do some budget mods. Um, I think you just need to let me know what budget mods you're gonna do and, and we'll get them done. You also have to have the tribes portion too.
Uh, Council, are there any additional questions for, uh, Treasurer Vicro this time? Uh, Councilman Puer.
Mason, have we heard anything from FEMA on reimbursements? Cause last week I was talking to. Steve Wilson down at Emergency Management and said some about money's coming in for the districts for reimbursement from a couple of years ago.
You know, we, we've been hearing that for quite a while. Uh, we even set up the accounts, everything for each of the districts. Uh, we haven't even heard anything for, I guess, a year. We've, they said we set everything up, uh, for spending, this and that, but. I, I haven't seen a letter or any indication that we're gonna receive anything from FEMA. Usually they would send, uh. Herman's office. Um, I, other than that, I don't know.
Um, thank you. Um, additional questions for Mr. Vicro? Treasurer Vicro?
But I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Sears.
Yeah, um, Mason, I was going over the general fund, um, budget. And we do, we do have a lot of the, you know, like the election offices, um, exceeded their budget and. Is that going to be addressed, uh, soon or by finance?
I know we talked about having a, uh, a working session on the, the quarterly working session. It just, we just haven't set it up yet. Um, uh, we, we get that, uh, going here pretty soon and, uh, I, I know we'll have a working session with finance when, when they're ready, I guess.
Okay, and I have another question on the construction office budget. Uh, what is that, um, supposed to be used for? Cause it has salaries for a hundred and fifty thousand. Capital outlet for a hundred and ten thousand. Is there a budget as to how it's gonna be used? What's the purpose?
Well, that is that, that for some reason, I don't know why that didn't get changed yet. We did the budget mod. That is actually the, uh. Uh, cannabis commission.
Okay.
And so I don't know why it still has, uh, construction office in there. Why even, it was the same. It was the same, uh, uh, office, our same account number. Um, just, and the name didn't change and I don't know why. I, I kept, uh, we get that strained out and I don't know why that didn't get strained out last time, but that. Should have been broken down into salaries. The capital outlet was a building that we purchased.
Uh huh. Okay, I got one more. It's just on the, uh, let me see. Page, I think it was page fifty-three, I think, but it's the coronavirus budget. It was budgeted at four hundred thousand and we spent, uh, four hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and thirteen, twenty-one. So we're over expended on that, but it's in the general fund budget, so, um, how? How are we going to look at that? Is it reimbursable by the coronavirus? Or the, the money from the budget that's coming in or what, what was that used for?
That is the, uh, day labors and the, uh, what do you call it? The border monitoring.
Oh, okay, so that one's coming up. I, didn't we pass something to, um, approve the extension?
Yeah, you put, approve the extension and some money from the Rama account to subsidize that and to get it reimbursed once the money does come in.
Okay, that's all I got. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, thank you, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Carlo.
Mason, it was my understanding, you know, that, uh, public safety, you know, they hadn't did. They had any drawdowns since the position was advertised and there were monies available also. For COVID. For the public safety. Um, where, where we at with, with public safety as far as their drawdowns? I know there was six reports that we had to do within a three-day period or something like that, that. That should have been done for over a year. Or where are we at with public safety?
I was never aware of that, Mike. Nobody ever told me anything about doing that, any drawdowns that are, are, that were supposed to be coming. You gotta remember, the BIA gives us these, these monies at the beginning of the year. They just send us millions of dollars. They don't ever. Uh, say, sometimes they don't even say what the drawdowns are for, what the budget, they don't send them. So we don't know what to, what reporting to send to the BIA over. A, a lot of these programs. They don't send the budgets. They don't send anything. They'll just send the, uh. Uh, payment in the PMS system, just saying there's ten million dollars here. And so that, so there's ten million dollar, dollars sitting in the BIA account without us knowing what it's supposed to be used for. So if there are some reportings that should have been done, you know, if, if the BIA didn't tell us which monies they sent down, how can we do the reporting? The only thing we can do is just show, uh, what money's been spent. I hope they explain that to you.
Well, tomorrow, could we have somebody, I don't know if the new Chief of Police is in his position yet, but. I think it'd be good if we had somebody, um, in the finance meeting tomorrow for an update.
I, I, excuse me, this is Cora. Um, I was talking with Dean and Olivia about that, cause they were working on the reporting. With Casey and, um, we could ask Dean to come down tomorrow and explain it to committee.
Well, it's the same thing that I explained to, to Cora, though, I mean, like I said, they're gonna send us the money. They're not gonna tell us what it's for or anything, so how can we do the reports?
That's right, but these are the reports from last year.
From what? The last, uh?
From public safety, their, um. Their reports were not submitted and Dean and Olivia were working on them.
Which ones? The four twenty-fives or the director's reports?
The four twenty-fives.
I don't remember these ones. I'll ask Dean again, but I don't remember anything being delinquent.
So Mason, that's what I was referring to, cause I know Dean and Olivia were trying to get current on all them reports, you know? They should have been done by the past, uh, Chief of Police, but, you know. I think it's a year and a half of reports that they had to do. So I think, you know, we need to really be on top of some of these programs, especially public safety. With the budget that they have and, you know, make sure that the reports are done. So I, I do believe we should have somebody go to finance tomorrow and give an update.
Yeah, we'll make sure someone's there, cause I, I don't remember being delinquent with any, uh, BIA reporting. Yes, we'll get someone there.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Yellowboy, sorry.
Mr. Chair, I can motion through Treasury Report.
Second.
Uh, motion, motion to approve seconded by Councilwoman Carlo. Uh, additional questions for Mr. Vicro, while he's on the phone? Uh, Treasurer, though, I just have one question real quick. Um, so we're having, uh, Crazy Horse Planning Commission meeting. And I'm not sure if you got the invite or not from our office this Saturday. Um, they, the, the district president's asked that you attend or somebody from your office attend. Um, so I wanted to make sure that you're aware of that.
Okay, yeah, I seen the vouchers come through. I sent them on the P, they being coded and get the checks going, so. I didn't know I was invited, but I'll, I'll, I'll figure something out.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Treasurer.
Okay.
Anything else, Council for Treasurer? Uh, or Councilwoman, go ahead.
You know, I don't know, uh, what's on your agenda, Mr. President, but, um, maybe Mason. I think these, the reports you gave us for the districts, I think it would be a good idea to, uh, maybe. Give those to the district presidents on, uh, when you're meeting, Mr. President. That way they have, uh, updated, um, budget on their, what's left in their COVID funds.
Um, yeah, I, we can do that. I can get with.
So I'll run a report.
Go ahead, Treasurer.
Yeah, Kevin, I'll report for you, uh, uh, Friday to make it real time. Uh, so it'll be up to date on everything, so I'll, I'll have a report run for you on Friday.
Okay, good deal. Thank you. So, yeah, we'll get that out to the, to the, I think that was part of the premise, that's what they were to figure out, but also. Just a process there on valtering. There's new presidents and stuff, so they just wanted to visit with you, so, hello. Um, anything else, Council? Hearing or seeing none, so to prove the Treasurer's report, uh, Secretary, if you can run the vote. Thank you.
Wesley Hopkins Senior.
Good.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior. Ryan. Gerald Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBray.
Oh.
James Cross. James Cross. Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior. Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
David Puer.
Yeah.
Sonia Lohawk Weston. Jackie Sears.
Yeah.
Michael Carlos Senior.
Yeah.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Uh, Council, that motion passes fifteen yes, one no and two not voting. Thank you, Council. Uh, thank you, Treasurer. Appreciate it. Um, next, I think is the fifth, fifth member's report. Uh, I think he passed that out. Uh, fifth member, I don't know if you want to come up here and motion to table. Okay, so, is there a second? No second. Was that including your motion? Okay, alright, so, okay. So I didn't, uh, was twenty-one?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at the wrong, I had the wrong agenda, so it was my fault.
Left out, left out.
Oh, you wanted.
If you have one thing that.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
On that last page.
So on that last page where the flyer for the treaty meeting in Rapid, the date had been changed. So we rescheduled it for May twenty-first and twenty-second. That'd be on the last page of your packet.
Uh, is there any more questions for the fifth member? Uh, okay, thank, thank you, uh, fifth member. Appreciate it. Um, so I think that is it, except for the Chief of Staff. Um, so is there a motion? Somebody want to make a motion to do this report? Uh, motion, uh, by, uh, Councilman Carlo. Uh, to do the Chief of Staff's report. And I. They, um, Councilman Yellowboy, do you want to do the Chief of Staff, like, do that conversation? So, okay, so who wants to make that motion? So. So, okay, so who wants to make that motion? So there's a, there needs to be a motion to go on executive session. Motion by Councilwoman Carlo, seconded by Councilman Watkins. Yeah, he's he's still here, so um any discussion on that, counsel? So hearing or seeing none, um Secretary, if you can give the vote to go on executive.
Wesley Hawkins.
Good.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior. Daryl Canoyer Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBray.
Oh.
James Cross. Ella John Carlo. George Dreamer Junior. Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
David Puer.
Yes.
Sonia Lohawk Weston. Jackie Sears.
Here.
Michael Carlos Senior. Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Uh council, so there's a motion to go on the executive that passes fifteen yes, one no, and two not voting. So thank you, counsel. Um so give us about maybe five minutes, and then we'll go on the executive, so uh yeah, you know, five-minute break, we'll get everybody else.